We have, tonight, all of the regular commissioners are here and we have one alternate who's not here, Jackie Betos, but we have two others if the need arises, there are two other alternates here. No, there's one, excuse me. So that does it for attendance. On approval of the minutes, we have to approve, review, and approve the minutes of May 6th. They were in the Dropbox and I hope everyone's had an opportunity to read them. I'm interested in any comments or corrections or suggestions that commissioners have on these minutes.
I just had a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman. Lines 28 and 37, those corrections were proposed by Jackie. That's where it goes. And on line 71, there's an extra T in my last name, so we'll correct that. My last name.
Anybody else? Well, with those corrections, we'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes, again, as they were submitted with the corrections that were just made.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the minutes from the regular meeting of Monday, May 6th, 2024, as amended.
In a second, please.
Second.
Okay, okay, thank you. So we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes from the meeting of May 6th. All in favor, say aye, please. And those opposed, nay.
I'm going to abstain as well.
I am also going to abstain.
So that's only three of them.
Well, actually, I think we're going to have to hold off on approval because we don't have four people who, we don't have four here who are at the meeting. But if people who weren't at the meeting feel they have either read the minutes, watched the SCTV broadcast, somehow prepared themselves, they don't have to abstain just because they weren't here.
Okay, then I'll put a minute.
Okay, then we have...
I didn't, I didn't realize that.
So how many does that leave that are still abstaining?
I'll approve as well.
Unanimous now.
Okay.
Yeah, it sounds like it's unanimous.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you, Brittany. Okay. Moving right along here. We have three items tonight that are all, they're all site plan approvals, and so there are no public hearings. And so we'll start first with the Westminster School application for a site plan approval. Is there somebody here? Hi there. Feel free to take the microphone and introduce yourself and go right at it.
All right. Good evening. My name is Ronald Baum, and I'm a professional engineer with Fuss and O'Neal. I'm here tonight representing Westminster School for a proposed project that they want to get started this summer down in the center of their campus. I'm going to just quickly go through a project overview with you, explain some existing conditions out there, and then I'll go into the detailed site plan after that. So what the application is, they want to rejuvenate this unused area on their campus. Right now, there's a small open area adjacent to their hockey rink, if you're familiar with their campus. If not, I'll show you existing conditions in a second. There's an underutilized area where they have paddleball courts, a garage, a shed, and just an area that can be better used. This area that we're going to show you will provide a safe environment for their students to go and gather and play with each other or just sit and relax. The project includes a viewing deck for those existing paddleball courts, along with a warming hut that's connected to that viewing deck, community space with pavilion structure, and a throwing wall along with a multi-functional sports court, basically a basketball court. This is an overview of the Westminster School campus. It's about 180 acres. They do own some properties around the perimeter of that as well, but the main campus itself is about 180 acres. The project that we're talking about tonight is located underneath that yellow dot in the center of their campus. It's a very low-lying area on campus next to their hockey rink. The majority of their student dormitories, residences, and academic facilities are up on top of the hill on the high side of the campus. This area is low next to the hockey rink. Next. Zooming into the area that we're talking about, the hockey rink is the large rectangle building on the top right there. And then the area surrounding that green line there is the area of work that we're proposing to do our site improvements. And you can see there, on the left side are the paddleball courts, and again, the hockey rink is on the right. Next slide. This page is turned, so north is now facing to the right. The hockey rink itself is the rectangle on the bottom of the page, bottom right corner there. To the left, to the left is the main campus where the residence, student dormitories, and academic facilities are. And the paddleball courts is that square on the top. If you're familiar with the site, you'll know the grade change is pretty significant there. If you're not familiar, the, like I said, the dormitories and the academic buildings, they're much higher than the area where the hockey rink is, and the grade change is about 40 feet over that short distance. Next. So how are we going to make it safer for the students and faculty who use that steep hillside to get down to this area? Now, they've worn away a path over the years to get down to the hockey rink area and the other athletic fields and courts that are even further to the north. So there is an existing path there now. It's a wood path, just a dirt path with a rope handrail. Part of this project, you'll see, is to sort of make that area more safe for the children. So we're proposing a timber trail with stone, crushed stone steps. There will be bollard lighting and an actual handrail adjacent to the stairs to get down that hillside. And to locate that, we're going to use the same location that the dirt path is in. It's going to meander a little bit more than the path itself that you'll see an image of shortly. But to get that staircase in, we're not going to cut down any large trees. We're going to basically field locate it and make sure that it's in a safe, appropriate place. Zooming in to what we're proposing here, paddleball courts are, is that white square on the left side of the screen. You've got a warming hut just above that that's connected to a viewing deck. So the paddleball courts are actually elevated from the existing grade. That's why we have that observation deck next to it. So if you want to go and watch somebody play paddleball game, you can go and get a spot on the deck and watch. If it's the colder months of the year, you have that warming hut. You can go in there and rest and warm up between matches. Just to the right of that, to the east, is a paver strip, so that dark hatched area that goes more vertical up and down. Those are pavers. To the right of that, we are proposing a pavilion. It's an open-air structure, another timber structure similar to, it's a prefabricated structure similar to something that you might find at like a clatter farm. So it'll get prefabricated at the facility, delivered in sections, and then assembled on-site. South of that, just to the south, lower on the screen of that pavilion, is a stone dust gravel type area where students can gather, community space where there'll be, you know, Adirondack chairs or picnic tables, places to gather and sit. String lights will go overhead to light it at night. Just to the right of that, between the community space there and the multi-functional sports court is a rain garden. So all of the stormwater runoff from those two areas will get collected in that rain garden, groundwater recharge, and I'll talk about the drainage in a second here. But to the east of that is the multi-functional sports court. That's all paved areas, so that light gray area, that's all bituminous pavement. South of the basketball court is a throwing wall, just a vertical concrete wall structure that students can use. They can throw a ball against. They can use their lacrosse sticks and throw the ball and have it come back to them. Just another activity for the students. And then just to the southeast of that, you'll see a little bridge and then the staircase going up to the main campus there.
Just one question. Is the, are they going to have lights on the basketball court?
Yes. And I'll go through the landscape and the lighting in a second. Hopefully address that comment. Next slide. So just some artistic renderings of what that warming hut is going to look like. You'll see on the left side of the screen is the paddleball courts, and then just to the right of that is that warming hut. It's another, it's just a timber structure similar to something that you might find at like a clatter farms type facility. You have a ramp and stairs getting up to that observation deck, so it is accessible. Next slide. This is what the site looks like now. So this would be if you were standing on the throwing wall area, that bituminous pavement section, looking at the paddleball courts. Those are the paddleball courts are in the back there behind the shed and the garage, and those are staying. And then the next slide here is what it would look like once it's all complete. So you have the paddleball courts off in the distance there. You've got that community space with the tables and the chairs, and you've got your pavilion structure on the right. Those tall poles have, you know, the string lights connecting to them to light that area at night as well. Next slide. Here's that path that goes up to the academic area and where the students' dormitories are. We're going to formalize that to have that timber staircase on the next slide there. So timber staircase, you've got your hand railing, stone treads, stone dust treads, and some bollard lighting as well. Those wood bollards on the right side of the screen just next to the, adjacent to the stair, we'll have bollard lighting to light those stairs at night.
Is there any other lighting in that area? There is.
Is there any other?
Yeah, along that stair.
Other than the bollards?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
No, there's no lighting now, so this will be a much-needed improvement. Go ahead. Next slide. And then there's just an image of what type of timber pavilion structure they're looking to construct next to the community space. It's open walled, so it's, you know, you can just go in there for shelter. They can close it off at night, or, you know, if the weather's pretty bad outside, they can close off the, close those doors. Next.
That's the pavilion, not the warming room?
Correct. Correct. Just something similar. It's, you know, this, it's not going to have bathrooms. It's going to be more of like an open-air structure. Next slide. As far as stormwater management goes, we looked at the existing conditions of the site, and we designed the proposed system to mimic those existing conditions. The blue circle, the blue round circles represent locations of drywells on campus. Westminster Schools infiltration rates over the, I've been working on projects at Westminster now for probably 15 years, and they have just incredible infiltration rates, so it's the amount of water that you can get into the ground, you know, it's a very small amount of time. Their campus is basically built on a sand pile, so as fast as you can pour water in, it's just going to go right into the ground. That being said, the new 2024 Connecticut guidelines for us on how to design our systems, they limit the amount of water that we can include in our calculations. So rather than using something like 60 or 70 inches per hour, which we have seen in the past, we have to use about two and a half inches per hour. So we have to design the system to accommodate the stormwater going to the site. We're not adding a large amount of impervious area, but enough to need to provide groundwater recharge and treat some water quality. The green rectangle area in the center is that location of the rain garden, so that will also add to the water quality improvements and promote groundwater recharge. Then the arrows provided on the right side are just, if no water does get into the ground to provide that groundwater recharge, we do have an outflow pipe that will connect to an existing stormwater management system right next to the hockey rink. And that goes due north onto the next screen there, eventually getting to, from the yellow dot where our project is, over to the blue dot, which is a natural depression located on Westminster School campus. So 100% of the stormwater that falls within that yellow dot gets retained on Westminster Schools' campus. Nothing leaves the site. Next slide. So as far as landscape goes, we are proposing some native species, red maples, sugar maples, let's see, what else, shad blows, and a variety of grasses and wildflower mixes. The grasses are more for the rain garden area, and then the wildflower mix and grass seed will go around the entire perimeter of the project. Lighting, you had a question about lighting, so we do have those bollard lights that go down the walking path. There are some, the overhead string lights over the community spaces, and the basketball court will be lit with 20-foot light poles, and all the fixtures, you know, with the exception of the string lights, of course, are full cutoff fixtures.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Are those, are those lights on 24 hours a day?
They're not, no.
So they're, so they're on some sort of timer or they're shut off?
I would imagine that they're going to want the kids to be back in their dormitories at a reasonable hour.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Do you anticipate any additional parking required for the types of activities being held on these?
No, it's, it's entirely for the students that are already on campus.
Actually, that's a good question because is it taking away any of the parking that's near the rink?
Nope, there is no parking down there at all now in this location.
I have one more question.
Sure.
You mentioned some of the landscaping in the area, and some of it would be native species, and I'm just curious as, I don't know if you have any more information on that. I'm just wondering about pollinators and that, that area is very dense, or, you know, there's a lot of trees and habitats and things like that.
There is. I'm not a landscape architect.
Nor am I, yes.
But I can say, I'm just going to read off the plant schedule of the type of species that are there. Like I said, the red maples, the sugar maples, that's the majority of the trees. There's the quantity of 14 red maples, and we're proposing 10 sugar maples, paper birch, pin oak, and that's the majority of the large tree species that we're proposing. Sorry, I don't have any more information.
That's okay. I might come back to that.
Okay. Go back one more slide, please. And then as far as the erosion sediment control goes, we are following the new 2024 guidelines for erosion sediment control guides. So any toe of slope, we're going to propose a silt sock staked into the ground. Project isn't large enough to require us to provide silt fence around the perimeter. Silt socks would function. They're basically those core logs that you see on a lot of construction sites now. Erosion control blanket in the low layer is that are going to see a lot of runoff, concentrated flows, any slopes that are greater than 3:1. And all of the inlets will be equipped with a silt fence, a silt sack liner to prevent any sediment from going into the pipe network. And we do have an anti-tracking pad. I'm not sure if it's going to be necessary here, but we are showing one in the contract. It will be responsible to make sure that they don't track sediment all over the Westminster School campus and then down onto Hot Meadow. Next slide. And then finally, this project is going to be phased over time. The area in green is an area that they want to get started on this summer. And all of the other colors, the purple, the orange, and the blue, there's no specific order of those elements, but those are other, additional phases as donor money comes in or money gets raised. Those are the chunks that they're going to do next. But there is no timeline at the moment for those other ones. The green one is, you know, a project that they want to get going on this summer. The rest are sometime in the future.
Could you remind us what's in the green?
Yeah, so the green will include the observation deck, the warming hut, the community space, the bridges, the rain garden, all of the stormwater infrastructure that's required for the entire project, and the area for the throwing wall. And that is my presentation, so I can answer, try to answer any questions you might have.
Sure.
Yep, I have another question. Do you know if this is open to the public, or does the public have access to any of this, or is it strictly for students and faculty?
I would imagine it's strictly for students and faculty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments? I think we're all set.
Okay.
If there, if there are no other questions or comments, any discussion?
I did want to mention, this did go to the engineering office for their review, and their comments have all been satisfied.
Now, this material wasn't shared with the design review board?
It was, it was shared with the design review board, and they had a positive unanimous referral. Thank you for that reminder.
I don't remember, Bruce. I mean, Lindsay's playing hockey at that rink all the time, and I think it's a nice improvement on the space, and I have no issues with it at all.
I can't remember the last time I was up there with my daughters. It was a long time ago.
So I was worried about the parking. They'll take a rink parking away.
Well, it's right in the middle of their campus, right? The yellow dot is pretty much dead center.
Yeah.
So I mean, no one but the students are going to see it anyway. If they do a bad job, they're only hurting themselves. I think they'll be all right. Yeah.
I think we're ready for a motion here to approve, and there is a, we were provided with a draft motion on the single sheet that was waiting for us when we got here. So would somebody like to motion approval by reading the draft motion to approve? And if you don't find it on your sheet, that's the document, it's the first one.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Shannon.
Yeah, thank you. So I move that the zoning commission approves application ZC number 24-12 of the trustees of Westminster School, owner Fuss and O'Neal, applicant for site improvements, including a basketball court, observation deck with warming hut, a 24-by-30 pavilion, and associated walkways at 995 Hot Meadow Street. Assessors map H07, block 103, lot 034, Simms Ferry, Connecticut, 06070, zone R-40 as submitted.
A little more.
I have to keep going. The commission finds that the application for a site plan has met the standards set in Section 3.4 and the site plan criteria in Section 11, and is subject to the following conditions. One, the project shall be developed in substantial conformance with the submitted site plan titled Westminster School Recreation Area, prepared by Fuss and O'Neal, dated April 24th, 2024.
Second.
Kate, was that you on the second?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second for approval of the application, 2412 from the Westminster School. Is there any further discussion? Then it's time for a vote. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. It's unanimous approval for application 24-12. Congratulations to Westminster School. It's going to be a nice improvement.
Very nice.
Our next item of business tonight is application 2413, which is, just a moment. My papers got out of order. That never happened before. Okay. This is from Kayler Real Estate LLC, has to do 552 Hot Meadow Street, and it's application 24-13. Is Mr. Kayler here or some other representative?
Yes, Mr. Kayler is here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah.
Go right at it.
I'll go right at it. So my name is Charlie Kayler. I'm the owner of Kayler Real Estate and the building there at 552 Hot Meadow Street that you see, former Ensign Bickford Home, built in 1900. It was once a residence, then it was a financial firm, then it was a retail establishment, and then it's been a real estate company for about the last six or seven years. What I'm trying to do now is utilize the space that's underutilized upstairs and convert the top, not the attic, the attic would remain unused, but the second floor, three rooms would be used for residential use. The intention is, is for me and my wife to either live in the home, or if I were to sell it in the future, for somebody who bought it to be able to work from home and live at the house as well. The intention is not to lease out that area that would be residential upstairs separately. It would be for somebody who is working from the location, who's living there as well, which I think would be a nice feature for the town and a business. What else can I tell you about it? So that's what I'm shooting for. There would be no changes on the exterior of the building. That would remain the same, as charming as always. And I have spoken to Henry with the building department. He's made a couple of suggestions of what I would need to do to conform that direction, but it seems very manageable and easy to do, so.
So could you flip ahead to the, the floor, the floorprints, the floor plans? It follows the application document and then a staff, a letter.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, by the way.
I was just curious about the second floor that your intention, and the point of the meeting is to authorize that for residential use. That second floor configuration, that's the way it is now. Bedroom, hall, full bath, den, and the kitchenette. Well, without those labels, there's
Without those labels, yes, sir.
Four rooms up there now.
Yep, they're currently just offices that are unused right now.
Okay.
The owner of the building before me, her intention was to live there and work there too, but did not go through the proper channels of doing that, and added a full bathroom upstairs and a full kitchen upstairs. And then she was told to cease and desist. Okay?
That's, I have a question around that, because I was, I was reading the correspondence from the fire marshal regarding the third floor.
Yep.
Noncompliant space with bathroom. But you're not planning to use the third floor?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. It's very low ceiling heights. The previous owner had bedding up there, and they were living there.
But there is a, there is a toilet up there. I think there was reference to that.
There is a toilet, yes, with water not going to it, and, yeah, you wouldn't.
So right, to use that, if they ever wanted to use that bathroom in the future, it'd have to go through the building fire permit process.
Another question? Okay, the first floor is going to be an office space?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, and it is potentially your, can you repeat what you said about the second floor? Either you and your wife will live there?
Yes.
Or?
Or if we sold the building in the future, then that would be somebody who bought it, they would find it appealing to do the same thing that I would be doing.
Okay.
Of working from home and then living there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a separate entrance to get to the second floor? Would you have to go through the first floor?
There is a separate entrance on the back of the building. There's a staircase that goes up to goes up to the second floor, into the kitchen area.
Sir, there's a bathroom on the first floor, right?
Yes, a half bath.
Okay. Only a half bath, though, so here, okay. I'm thinking about the future, so, you're talking about your existing use for it, right? You would live up top, business at the bottom, I'm just looking at...
Yep, short commute, yep.
Yeah, no, that's great, I agree. Yeah, yeah, well... Well, yeah, that's what I was thinking, or, or as a duplex, either way. If it could be two families going forward. That being said, I mean, it's mixed use, unauthorized use, accessory to the commercial sizes.
It's in a business zone, so the accessory use has to be accessory to the business.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, the business has to stay a business on the first floor.
Oh, it must, well, okay.
Yes, yeah. And the residential is accessory to that business.
Right. Well, it's good that that's what he's proposing.
But just for clarification...
Thank you.
The residents on the second floor need to be employed by, or owners of the business on the first floor?
They, they do not.
Okay.
So, what he's referencing is a building code, where there are, there are some lax rules if the person who owns it works and lives there, but that is beyond, for our purposes, the use can be a, just a residential use, it doesn't have to be the owner living there.
Right, okay. So, it doesn't have to be an employee or an owner, it can be anybody?
Right, right.
But there need to be some slight, potentially some slight modifications, like a certain kind of door, or whatever...
Yes, sprinklers, yes, it would have to...
If you were not...
It would trigger those requirements.
Treating it like a single, it's really a single use, you're sleeping there and you're working there. Okay.
Okay.
Other questions? Are there any other slides, Brittany, to go along with this?
Parking was reviewed as well, and the, the site meets the parking requirements for residential use. Other than that, there was no exterior modification, so it was straightforward.
Great. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I can hear the motion, are we ready?
Just for me, one more time, any further comments or questions? Okay, then, we are all set.
Don't wait, Ken, Dr. Scott's in.
Well, I, I was just gonna say that I think this is a great use of the space, using underutilized space like this is fantastic, this is very short housing, or certainly short kind of small A affordable housing that this would provide. I wish every business owner in town was doing this kind of thing, so I definitely encourage the rest of the commission to vote yes. That's all.
Thank you, Tucker.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board, yep.
Anybody else?
I think Bruce has...
Hearing no further questions or comments, why don't we move for a motion to approve? We have a draft motion, the middle of the, the middle on draft proposal, on the document sheet that Bethany gave us earlier, which I seem to have gotten out of order, but is there a, a member who would like the...
Tucker's ready to go.
Tucker's ready to go.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Town of Simsbury zoning commission approve application ZC 24-13 of Kayler Real Estate, owner Charlie Kayler, applicant for a site plan amendment pursuant to section 4.5 of the zoning regulations to add a residential use to the second floor of the existing commercial building at 552 Hot Meadow Street, assessor's map G12 block 132 lot 032, zone B-1. The commission finds the application for the site plan has met the standards set in section 4.5 and the site plan criteria in section 11, and is subject to the following conditions. One, project shall be developed in substantial performance with the submitted floor plan and revised site plan titled Site Plan Prepared by Anchor Engineering Services Incorporated, date April 6, that, oh, okay, April 6, 2017. Two, building and zoning permits approvals are required prior to any interior work.
I will second the motion.
So, we have a motion from Tucker, and a second by Tony. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. It's a unanimous vote to approve the application as it was submitted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I had so many copies of our agenda tonight, I got myself mixed up. Here we go. The third item of business tonight is for the application 2414, which has to do with the current Tower Ridge Disc Golf and Talke Mountain Collective, application 2414. Terry, are you the presenter? Thank you. So, Terry Han is going to be the presenter on this application.
Good evening, Terry Han, principal LADAPC with the site planners for the project. This is an application for Two Sisters Ice Cream. It's located at the Tower Ridge Disc Golf, formerly, depending on how long you've been in town, Cliffside Country Club, Tower Ridge, you know, there's a bunch of different things. So, the main buildings, as we go north, is at the top of the site, the buildings are along Nod Road, we're just south of the main buildings, in the area that used to be, if we go to the next slide. So, the, there used to be a ice cream and grill type building, which is the one on the lower right, at the site, and that building was removed, but the, the floor and the foundations are all intact, and so we're using that in a much, much smaller structure, but using that footprint, so that you get a general sense of where we're at. Next slide. Existing conditions, you can sort of see, you can see the main building on the left-hand side, in the back, you can see the existing floor and concrete, and then on the right-hand side, you see the existing parking lot. There's a, an existing parking lot that runs to the south of this area, it needs to be restripped, so that's one of the proposals, is we gotta re-stripe this thing, and make it so that it conforms now to, for accessible parking spaces, because right now, it's just a big open asphalt. For the last couple of years, as a temporary measure, the owners have had a trailer on the site with the, the white fence, to see if ice cream was viable, and so now they want to make it permanent. And so we have a structure. In addition, a pavilion was installed, and although, from, for various different reasons, we're here to get that formalized, so that that is now in place and approved. The picnic pavilion, is there, the picnic space is within all the white fencing, so it's not a random use area, it's pretty much contained, as you can see in the photo, which is on the right-hand side from last year.
So, is fencing the perimeter of the building that's no longer there?
Yep, correct. Yep, the, so, if we're looking from the parking lot towards the main building, you can see where the pavilion is, you see where the picnic area is with the white fencing, and then where the ice cream building is gonna go. So, that's where that is. It's a, remember, it's a seasonal use, this is ice cream, so, you know, it's, it's limited time periods, it's limited use, and it's just for, for purposes of ice cream. The existing walkways are in place, we do have to add some, in order to provide accessibility, there's a handrail and a section that has to be added for accessibility purposes, and that the overall area of disturbance, and by disturbance, I just mean that this is the sort of general work area, is less than 1,000 square feet, and there's no new land disturbance, everything's previously been used. Then the next slide, we can see that there used to be a tennis court to the south of this building, that's been removed and functions as overflow parking for the overall complex that's there, and that's where the dumpster is located, back there, it's screened far away from the street, so that's a question that had come up. So, the main focus here is the ice cream building, and then you can see the picnic pavilion is the square slightly to the upper right of that, on here, yep. Okay, next slide. So, just a close-up, so you can see what's going on, because it's a little hard to see in the big picture. All the area that you see that's kind of whited out in the background of the aerial, that's the old floor from the building. So, you can see we're pretty, we're pretty much limited to right there, what has been done before. Okay, next slide. So, this is the building, the main, you know, where you walk up to, where the windows are, are up in the upper left-hand side, then it goes to the right, as, as we're going around it, towards the right. The rear is the one with the two doors, there is a bathroom that's there, the doors are for staff only, and it's pretty straightforward. Can I go to the next one? So, building colors, we do have a materials board, in case anybody wants to see it, that's basically cedar shakes, brown asphalt shingles, the trim, and the, and the addition of this brick red for around the windows and stuff is starting to create a theme, and we have been in front of the design review earlier this evening, and they did recommend positive recommendation, had a positive recommendation. This is the picnic pavilion, it's a wood structure, and pretty straightforward. Next one, just in case there's any other questions, there, where we're at and what we're doing, and then the next slide, just a couple things, there are some existing pole lights that are out there, they're on switches, there are, we're anticipating that there be, these are very, very short, they're like nine feet tall, eight feet tall, and they shut off, and I would emphasize the fact that it is not a place that's used at night, this is seasonal, so it's open at 9:00, when the sun is up at 9:00. So, it's, the, the lighting is very low-key, it's not substantive. There will be string lights on the picnic pavilion, but that's, you know, across, around the white post, on the white fence. There are building lights that go over the doors, because that's required by code. Other than that, we did go through staff review, there were some ice cream cones that were shown on the side that faces Nod Road to the north, but they were determined to be signage, so that's been removed from the application, we'll figure that out as we get in place here. We added the dumpster, lighting, just to be clear, that it was turned off after hours, and that the picnic pavilion be added to the application, so that's been shown. That's everything I have.
Just a point of clarification, the parking for people that are coming for ice cream...
Yep.
Is that the same parking as...
No. Can we slide back, back three slides? There we go. Okay, so, the parking for the Disc Golf is to the north of this, you see where it says front yard, there's a parking area up there for, and for the collective. The parking lot for the ice cream is this, that runs south here.
Okay. So, that northern portion is where people park if they're there for an event?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I thought you had said something about the ice cream was kind of there to support the Disc Golf?
Yes.
Are they affiliated, they're connected?
I mean, to the extent that they're on the same location, it's operated, I believe, by the, the ownership group, right?
Not the Disc Golf, it's...
No, no, the, the ice cream.
Yes.
The ice cream is, is operated by the, but the, the Disc Golf, it's one of those places we need some critical maths...
Sure.
And some support for the people who are there.
I was going to say that I, I think the Disc Golf needs perhaps a little bit more folks paying attention, so I, I support that, I was just curious what the connection was.
Yep, yep.
I have a question. I couldn't quite tell from the pictures about the accessibility to, I know you mentioned the parking spaces...
Yep.
But to both the, the pavilion and the ice cream...
Right, so, hang on, can I probably click her head? Okay, so, you would come from here, up this way, up here, I have to add some railings right through this area, because it's a little steep. Ice cream, these are the doors here, and the windows for that.
Okay.
And then the, the accessible, there's a picnic table over here specifically for the accessible use.
Okay.
There's a walkway that goes to the bathroom right through here, and after discussion from the design review, you can actually get to the picnic pavilion, there's a four-foot walkway or space in between the picnic pavilion and the building this way.
So, is there room for someone in a wheelchair to get through the front door of the, of the ice cream?
You don't go, you don't go to, you go to the window, I'm sorry.
Oh, I see.
Staff only, this is a, it's a window service.
Got it, okay.
Okay, sorry.
Perfect, all right, thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The bathroom is for staff only?
Yeah, the bathroom is accessible.
Okay, but was the bathroom for staff only as well?
No, no, it's, it'll have to be public.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's all, you said it's a little steep, but it is a ramp up...
Yes, correct.
And they can get onto the...
Yeah, it meets, it meets the, it does not exceed 8%, but it is more than 5% on this one particular stretch, so we'll add the railings in, and otherwise, and it's just short, it's probably six feet long that that occurs at, so it's relatively short.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I just had, just like, one really quick comment, is obviously, it's better if you come before you build things like the pavilion, that's just for the owner, putting it out there, it's great to get it done now, I'm glad you're here on this other structure, but it'd be, like, it's such a great thing that's going on over there for the community, but we have to be better about making sure we're getting in front of the proper boards and commissions before we do work.
If I can, just, Kevin would like to just make a, make a response to that.
Yeah, bit of a mea culpa, Kevin Casey, some very real estate holdings. I want to thank you for accepting this application at this time, and there was, to clear up a little bit of confusion, came up in the meeting earlier, design review board, and said, "Well, you know, they did this without, without asking," that's actually not true. We applied for a building permit, we paid for a building permit, we didn't finish the, like, sort of an ignorance defense here, we didn't really finish the process because the building inspector came down, gave us advice about how to build it, so, having paid for the application, having made the application, we thought, when the building inspector came, we were good to go, and we learned, really, that that's not the case, that it had to go through any kind of modification of site plan, and, which is why we're here now. But I apologize that it was really our mistake, and we don't want to make that mistake again, and that's why we're here. So, thank you, and to the town staff, thank you for understanding and helping us get to this point right now, we won't, we won't make that mistake again.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments, questions, opinions?
I'll just say, in the same way that Tucker really liked the last one, I really like this, I like the use of this space, I like that we're trying to, you know, use existing building, and, and I think, you know, it's, it's very appealing to me, so I like to support that, because I think it's, because it's a good use of space, it's not a whole bunch of condos.
It was well-used when the Caddyshack was there, Cliffside Country Club.
I'm not saying this is better or worse, but I like the use. I like that, yes.
Tough course to Caddy.
The practice of reusing things, yes.
All right. If we've gotten enough from Terry to get to a decision. Thank you, Terry.
Can I just add one, one comment? So, as Mattan mentioned, DRB provided a positive referral this evening, they did make one comment, which was mentioned that there be access through the pavilion to the restroom, so I just think we should add that as a condition, just to make sure it's captured through the approval process.
Anybody else? I'm sensing that we're ready to take this up for a vote, too.
I'll do this one, if you'd like.
Oh, sure. Thank you, Diane.
Okay. I move that the Town of Simsbury zoning commission approves application ZZ 24-14 of Simsbury Real Estate Holdings LLC, owner and applicant for a site plan amendment for construction of an approximately 480 square foot building, and an associated pavilion at Tower Ridge Disc Golf and Talke Mountain Collective, 140 Nod Road, assessor's map G18, block 110, lot 033, zone R80. The commission finds that the application for a site plan has met the standards set in section 3.4 and the site plan criteria in section 11, and is subject to the following
conditions. Project shall be developed in substantial conformance with the submitted site plan titled Site Plan Modification Application Two Sisters Ice Cream at Talke Mountain, prepared by LADA PC, date 4/30/24, revised 5/7/24. Two, signage is not included with the application. Any signage proposed for the site will require additional review and approvals. And three, access to be provided from pavilion to bathroom as discussed by DRB earlier today.
In a second, please.
Second.
So, we have a motion in a second to approve, um, application 24-14. So, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. The approval of 2414 is unanimous, and so, congratulations to all who contributed to assembling this application and, and processing it, so, good. Have a good night.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if you had something specific in mind, Bethany, with insertion of general commission business. I had just one thing I wanted to mention, but, um, and I, I, it just occurred to me that I've grown a little bit reliant on George to sort of interject when, and it's, he always gives sort of an intro on each of the applications before. And I forgot to give Bethany the floor to give us an explanation.
It's okay. We had it ready, but we knew the applicants also had presentations, so we, they just take over.
Okay. So, the one thing I wanted to mention was, uh, there, there, in the last several months, there was a commission created called the Simsbury Housing Policy Advisory Committee. And Shannon is the person that I appointed to be the represent, representative from the zoning commission, but it also turns out we needed an alternate for the Simsbury Housing Policy Advisory Committee. And Jackie Betos has agreed to be the alternate to serve on that committee. And she doesn't happen to be here, as we can all see, but she knows, so, uh, she was very enthusiastic, as was Shannon, so hopefully, that commission, which has a sunset provision in the regulation that created it, but they're scheduled to be ending their activities at the end of 2025. So, um, that's it for what I wanted to add to the meeting. And I started talking again without giving you an opportunity. You didn't have anything more to add? Okay. All right. Does anybody else have anything they wanted to add under general commission business? Okay.
Oh, wait, hang on, there's something. Sorry, I had one.
Oh.
I just wanted to inquire, I know we talked about doing further discussions about some zoning changes, specifically about the inclusionary zoning. I just, is there another one of those meetings scheduled yet?
It's expected to be on the agenda at our next meeting.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you.
And that was also, it just says priorities, prioritization.
That's the, it's that exercise that we deferred from the last meeting to...
Right, okay.
Till we had more people here.
Sweet, thank you.
Oh, and the difference between this meeting and next one is George is away today. And so, he's back for the next meeting in two weeks.
Got it.
And will be able to, uh, give his input, so, there we go.
6:00 PM start for the next one?
Yeah, I think it's 7:00 PM.
It should be regular time, yes.
It's just a regular meeting.
But in the library.
Correct.
It'll be in the library, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we had enough fun? Looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
In a second. So, Shannon and Tony on the motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Well, we're, with that, we're adjourned.